Do we have a chaplain in the room, please? Chaplain.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, this afternoon on the eve of this Thanksgiving holiday, we desire to give you thanks for all your blessings. So often, we can go through our days and take for granted your many blessings. But we thank you for your love and compassion, which is new every morning. You are faithful, loving God, who said that you would never leave us or forsake us, and we can walk with you, but you never walked away from us. As we gather here, in this building, we come together to transact the business of our community. And we come with grateful hearts for the numerous strides forward that have been taken, that have contributed to our well-being, to our safety, to our wholeness, and present blessings. The task remains constant for unfinished projects and new challenges. And I pray for those who sit before me and those who step forward to be servants of our people. May they remain humble and teachable, gifted, and always have a servant's heart. I pray for the many members of our law enforcement community, and we ask for your protection, body, soul, and spirit. Bless their spouses and their children with your peace and comfort. I pray for members of our fire department, ambulances, and volunteers and those departments, that you also would protect them at all times. Countless individuals work in our health care system and hospitals and clinics and other health-related responsibilities. Would you also protect them as they go about their work and also provide workers where there is a need? We are blessed with fine schools, both public and private. We ask for your blessings, enablement, and guidance to those teachers, administrators, who are constantly instructing our children. This evening, I pray for knowledge to be seen and wisdom to be unearthed for our commission members and chairman. Guide them and lead them in the decisions that are made, and may there be unity and profitability in all these proceedings. Heavenly Father, in closing, I am reminded of a beloved song that comes to my mind at this particular time of Thanksgiving. Words, "God bless America, land that I love." Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam, God bless America, my home, sweet home. We ask all these in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 So we stand for the meeting.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, chaplain. Yes. And with that, I would like to call to order the weed board. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Schwab. Commissioner Woodcox. Commissioner Monson.
Here.
Commissioner Bittner.
Here.
Chairman Bakken.
Here. First item up, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Woodcox. Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Chairman Bakken.
Yes. Next item up, consideration of the October 4th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab. Commissioner Woodcox. Chairman Bakken.
Yes. Next item up, chemical application bids for the 2025 season. Darren.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. What we got going on today is the contract. There's three different forms. Oh, sorry. What we have going on is there's three different forms that I've looked into with the from the past. There was several different, I don't know what you call them, different contracts that were explainable or, you know, covered certain things. But I did feel that we needed more with the, a little bit, a little different change. The first one that I would have you point your eyes to is in the reset tools of the number one on the Burley County Noxious Weed Control Contract. It says, whereas the board has statutory responsibility pursuit through the 4-147, which includes the herbicide control of state prescribed noxious weeds on all Burley County right-ofways. And that's where it had stopped before. In the past, we've been doing state and federal highways also. They send a contract in, and basically, our sprayers would take care of that and fulfill it. Where when they actually, I don't think they knew that they were, you know, in this contract, it wasn't in there. So I felt that the state and federal highways, when contract for NDDOT is accepted by Burley County Weed Board annually, that gives it a little fluctuation where, you know, one year they may not want us to spray, or they find a different sprayer. And that the contractor who receives the bid also knows that that's in there. So there's just that explanation is on that one. And then we go to the bid for rates. There was one that had on page two. There's one bid application or contract that had, that required a boat. And then I didn't feel that was necessarily, you know, because next to the river and such. I'm actually working with the park, the park and rec with other, the gentleman weed officer in Morton County also. Just to kind of feel it out is how we can, there's so many different areas along the river. There's core land, there's private land, there's all that. So that's something I'm checking into so we can do applications where we can or if we can. So I took that out, and then the stipend, of course, was taken out because of our past meeting. I took that out of that. Then we go to page three, right at the top. One particular contract had, right below the minimum requirements, it says the three-quarter ton four-wheel-drive pickup, whatever, with two 200-gallon carrier tanks. One had, one contract had 250-gallon tanks and then as a minimum. And then there was one, it just said 300-gallon minimum. But the latest one that I've worked or looked at was two 200s. So in the past, the sprayers that had been doing and contracting for Burley County did and had two 200-gallon tanks. Just little things that I'm trying to clarify. And I believe that was, yes, that was the changes that I looked at for the weed control contract. Then we move on to on your papers there, yes. Then we look at the bid specification. It's basically what I just said, but I felt that it needed to be addressed, of course. The two 200-gallon tanks, not the 250s, the removal of the boat requirement, and the removal of the stipend also. So that is the only changes that were made to that particular contract or form. And then we go to the notice of bids. This is, we had discussed the time for this to be dated in the newspaper at our last meeting. The dates are the same. What was changed here on this particular one was the way the notice for bids, it was worded in a sense that on, like on our bid here, our bids will be accepted on Monday, January 6th. And that's, they have to be in by January 6th on or before 5:00 PM. Well, the other one didn't, it specified that that was going to be when we were going to open and read, publicly read them. But it didn't specify that if that was exactly when we were going to accept the contract or if we had time to review and such. So that is what I've written in so that we, that the 6th is when they're supposed to be in, received by. And then January 22nd is when the reviewing and the decision on the contract will be announced. And then at the bottom, because of, I wasn't, I wanted this looked into, I just, I did change the dates for when it'll be run in the paper. The plan was for it to be run in last week's. So I'm putting, I just changed the dates so that we're operating or putting them in the paper this week.
Any questions?
Questions for Darren?
Steve? Okay.
Microphone.
Microphone.
Mike.
We aren't obligated, and Darren and I have gone over this. We're right-ofway, but that's a gray area. Riverbanks are not right-ofway. That's number one. And number two, the right-ofways on the interstate and the state highways, I believe, are a pass-through on the billing, right?
They're, I'm sorry?
Is a pass-through on the billing.
Yeah, that the state, yes.
If the state gives us, pays for the whole thing. But it is a touchy deal on that, on that river. There's so many people involved in that. And I, I don't know, we should be out there spraying riverbanks when somebody's got a swimming pool next to the river and his dog's running around out there. It isn't a right-ofway. So I would think whoever controls that is going to have to figure out what to do down there.
That's what I'm going to be looking into on that because I've talked with game and fish. I've talked with a core member, and it seems like it's just kind of a, like you say, gray area because one area that they do take care of it, one area they don't want to touch it, you know, type of a deal. But I just, I feel that I need to know or we should know what's going along that river, you know, as far as the weed control. Because a lot of bodies of water, from the edge of water, you know, you might have a 20-foot easement or a 40-foot easement in there. Well, that's what I want to find out, who is controlling that, and if that is something that we need or that needs to be taken care of. Because if it's not taken care of, the weeds aren't taken care of up the river, you're just going to have more problems down the river also. So it's just something for my own education, kind of, in a sense. But also, you know, to serve that area and make sure that it was looked, that it is looked into and whatnot.
So, kind of my thought on that, would that be part of the state's program or core program? Or, because it's, that's core's jurisdiction.
Well, I mean, you've got, like you say, you've got.
Multiple agencies here.
Absolutely.
There's got to be one that's got some oversight because I can't imagine they cast it in the wind and see where it falls because that's how weeds spread.
Yeah. See, that's what I want to check into, and I'm just keeping my weed board, you know, in information on that and kind of give you an idea of what I'm up to there.
I think in the past, if they did anything on the river, that was a pass-through to whoever wanted it, whether it was the Army Corps, the state, or whoever, park board, whatever. Because actually, we are not, we are not, according to the Century Code, supposed to be doing riverbanks. So technically, if they want us, to help them get a sprayer, that's fine to let us know what they're doing down there so they do the right thing. But I don't think we need to buy a boat to spray down there, something that doesn't belong to us.
Any, Commissioner Bittner?
Thank you. On the bottom of page two, the second line from the bottom, I think you meant to say there, which could be a half-ton. And on my copy, it has percent sign in it.
Okay. Oh, this on the specifications?
Bid rates on page two, there's second page in. Second line up from the bottom.
The percent sign.
Yeah. I saw someplace else where you had mentioned that.
The weed control contract, the main one.
Okay. We'll get over to that.
Are you talking about where equipment starts?
No, just on the contract here, the second page of the actual contract where it talks.
Yes, sir, the which could be, and I see the percentage on there. I didn't change anything in there. I left that because that's the way that was particularly, I can change that absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, to a half-ton.
Yeah, because I saw something else someplace where it referenced half-ton, and I'm just taking for granted that's what you meant.
Yes, yes.
Darren, at the bottom of that page, you have three trucks, one backup truck, which could be a percent ton.
Right. That's good. That's what we're talking about. We're going to change that to a half-ton.
A half-ton?
Yes.
Will a half-ton handle that?
Well, that's, the half-ton putting two 200s in there, that's just going to have to, you know, whether that's as a backup, they can have two 150s in there. I mean, and for the half-ton, or they just have one 200 for backup till they have the others, you know, till they get the other one fixed or whatnot. I mean, in these, in the contract, I mean, there's a lot of them what-ifs in there, you know, I mean, there really are. So, I mean, this is one of them. I mean, as a half-ton, we can specify at a half-ton, they have to carry at least a 200-gallon, a single 200-gallon in it. For a backup, I mean, I'm open to suggestions or whatever. Because, I mean, the half-ton isn't going to, you know, we're talking roads. If they have a half-ton, a 200 would be fine with that. And we're talking roadways, they don't have to take it down the ditch and try to twist the frames on it or whatever, you know, by having, you know, 400 gallons in the back of a half-ton wouldn't be, wouldn't be something I would do.
But it should be a four-wheel drive, right?
Yes. Yeah, that, the four-wheel drives. And then, because on the bid specification sheet, they've got to name out their three trucks, but they don't have, you know, the backup truck or the fourth truck on that one. So as, I mean, with this half-ton, I can put down, you know, one single 200-gallon tank so that they're not sitting, you know, they're actually out still being able to spray.
Have you ever monitored how many gallons they're actually using in a day's time?
Well, that all depends on the weather all that, you know, it's kind of, I mean, it's, what they, what, on our, on our spray sheets and whatnot, yes. I mean, if I looked into it, I've never, I didn't monitor or write down exactly what they, you know, average use was per day or by the hour or any of that right now, no.
Well, I think if anything, there could be a clause that, you know, we're not paying you an hourly rate to go back and reload the tank. You know, if you don't have sufficient product to spray the day, then.
Well, that's where the two 200s come in.
I know.
Right, yeah, no, they, yeah, they've definitely got enough, they've definitely got enough chemical to spray the whole day. Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, because I've seen in the past, or I've seen bills that, you know, there's travel time and whatnot involved. And we're not going to pay to go from Menocan back to Bismarck to get a tank of water so you can go back to work.
Right. That's where that stipend comes in. That's where we remove that, so.
Just be watching for that so that we're not.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Because I sprayed a lot over the years, and we ran two 450-gallon tanks. We run a couple sprayers off of that, you know, we can burn through 900 gallons in a day. But I don't know how, what size nozzles and whatnot you're using on these little trucks.
Right.
The size of the sprayers, so. I don't understand, but that's a lot of weight. We don't, we don't put any of our tanks in a pickup.
Right. Well, that's where the two 200s, in the past, that's what the contractors were using on a three-quarter-ton truck as required. And they were fine with that, so that's why I just figured we'll just go with that because it's basically a standard almost then, you know, so.
But I think there's some common sense involved with that, too, as far as, you know, somebody wants to pull a trailer or, you know, for different logistical purposes, we can make accommodations for that as they arise.
Right, absolutely.
Any other questions? Consensus on some of the language changes?
I think something's good.
No. Darren, thank you. Any other business with the weed board?
Do we need to approve these contracts?
Consensus, it's just some language changes. So.
I had a couple other things real quick for basically old business. I checked in. At the last meeting, we visited about purchasing a generator for the distribution center. Through the TEG, I can, we can purchase a generator. The hard wiring that we had talked about, the TEG will not cover that. But I did speak with the electrical inspector, and he said that a generator placed outside, extension cord, and a temporary heater in there if power goes out is fine. Just use our better judge, you know, just use our better judgment and place the heater in a proper place. And so that was all I had there, but just to keep you informed on that.
Perfect. Your intent to proceed that direction, then?
Yes. I mean, I'll ask you if I should go ahead with the purchase of a generator off the TEG program so that we do have a backup.
And that's something we discussed before, so.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
So it's, that's.
Yeah, so again, consensus on going that route instead of hardwiring something in, so. Good on that. So Darren, proceed with that. Anything else?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Any other business, the weed board? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, Darren.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, I'll call November 18th, meeting of the Burley County Commission to Order. First item of business is roll call of members, please.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Here.
Commissioner Monson.
Here.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Here.
Chairman Bittner.
Here.
I'm going to make some changes to the agenda. There was, there was something that was supposed to be on the agenda. We had a CO2 update. So I'm going to insert CO2 update in between the consent agenda and Bismarck Parks and Rec. I know there's a lot of people here that want to speak on that, so we're going to try to get to that reasonably soon. Then I'm going to move item number 11, which is County Finance Director Jacob's first quarter investment report up to right in front of CO2. So that we're going to hear the investment report first, then we're going to go into CO2. And then, under other business, I'm going to add a request from the city of Bismarck. I got an email from Mr. John Fraase, F-R-A-A-S-E, inquiring about renaming the municipal courtroom over in the county courthouse. And instead of like room 103, they want to give it a name. Which I, I checked with Kevin, and every other courthouse in the building is only by numbers. So I don't know that that was something we'd want to do, but I want to add that under other business. Then boiler replacement issue for the courthouse. We have a real late-breaking thing. I think it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, and Kevin called and we had a boiler go down, break down in the courthouse, and we don't have parts available for that particular machine. So we need to have a discussion about the path moving forward. And we have a plan, so I'm going to put that under other business. Then if possible, I would like to have a little conversation concerning an Apple Creek ordinance that's been submitted to Burley County. It's not for a decision, it's just for informational purposes. I know that that was provided to state's attorney lawyer, and we'll just have a little conversation about that. So that's not for a decision.
Mr. Chairman, I would like, I think auditor is going to add, but I'll make sure that we do it. There's an application for an opening in the Water Board, the Pretty Kind of Water Resource Board. And we do have an application. It looks really good, and I want to get that acted on this evening.
Okay, we'll add that as well. Any other additions or changes?
Yes, I want to talk about a bridge south of McKenzie.
Okay.
A bridge.
Bridge. Right, we did.
Just south of Lincoln Road, so it's quarter of a mile south of Lincoln Road. We got to name these bridges.
South of Lincoln Road.
We should get the kids going and start naming. I'm serious, so we know what we're talking about.
Well, how about if we call this one Schwab Bridge?
Schwab Number One, Schwab Bridge Number One.
Nobody'd use it then.
Okay. You don't have an approximate location of that, do you?
Quarter mile south of Lincoln Road.
Where at? Eastern West?
It's straight south of McKenzie. Going to the Doane Ranch, Blackleggy Ranch.
South of McKenzie.
What, 236? On 236.
Cali Road 236.
Okay, we got it. Now we know what we're talking about. Okay, any other additions? Okay, with that, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve as amended.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Is our date of Wednesday noon too early in the process, or should we bump that up to Thursday noon or something? Because we get so many additions lately that when you think you got a two-hour meeting, you got a four-hour meeting. And just because of things that are not advertised, and people don't know they're on there, and they might want to be involved, and they can't because it pops up.
Right. That's a real good point, but every one of these things that I mentioned have come up since Wednesday.
What's I mean, is our Wednesday date too early, too much time?
I think, we had, I had this conversation with the auditor at one point, is that the goal is to, as much as possible, have agenda items that go out to the public done and advertised by Wednesday. And that gives commissioners ample opportunity to research and to find out, you know, what they need to know about this. These late-breaking things that you can't do anything about, like the boiler breaking down.
Well, I realize that.
Thursday.
Like the CO2 pipeline thing, we got people, a lot of people don't even know.
That came up Friday.
Yeah, that was Friday, based on that PSC permit thing. So there again, yes, the goal is to make sure that everything is in by Wednesday at noon. But it's always been my position that commissioners can add to the agenda, certainly up until the meeting when you have, you know, things that need to be talked about and dealt with. That's appropriate, because some of these things, for example, the boiler, we're not going to put that off for two weeks because it's going to start snowing here tomorrow or the next day. So, you know, we have to make some decisions, so. The goal is to make sure that for as much as possible, we have as much advance noticed so the agenda isn't burdened that much by these last-minute additions. But you just, sometimes you just can't avoid it.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Schwab.
Most of the stuff here that we're talking about, these additions are, it's good to put them on now and. it's good to put them on now instead of under other business, you know, I mean. We, we could have still done them under other business, so it's
Yeah.
you know, as long as I don't think we're voting on anything.
No. No, I don't, I don't.
But it's nice to get it, the word out that it's.
Sure. Okay.
Well, and I think, Chairman, if, you know, something comes up and and because we have to deal with things as they come, but if something comes up and and we feel it's important enough to get further vetted, then that's when we can always continue something to the following meeting, so.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, I'm always in favor of addressing things as they come, getting to them as soon as possible.
Okay, so did we vote on that?
Yes. Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Okay.
I withdraw my objection, but I still object.
I have another agenda, I have another agenda.
Okay, consideration of the October eighteenth special meeting minutes and November fourth, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes and bills.
Mr. Chair, I would approve, move to approve October eighteenth and November fourth, uh, meetings and, uh, the bills I approved this afternoon. Uh, Auditor Sponskowski will give us an update on the special meeting minutes later on, so I'll hold that for then.
Second.
I have motion to second, any further discussion? Called roll, please.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chair and Benner.
Yes, motion carries. Next item is consent agenda, there's abatements and a check replacement. Um, anybody want to discuss anything in particular on the, uh, consent agenda? If not.
Move to approve, second.
I have motion to second to approve any further discussion, seeing none, call it roll.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chair and Benner.
Yes, motion carries. Next item, uh, that I moved up is the, uh, twenty twenty four first quarter investment report, County Finance Director Jacobs. Welcome, Lee.
Chair Bitner and Commissioners. So as indicated, we are discussing the, uh, investment report, um, the, the county has an investment policy which requires quarterly and annual reports to the commission. The reporting requirement has been neglected. And so the finance department took the initiative to create this report, starting with Q one, twenty twenty four, with the goal of providing the whole twenty twenty three annual report at the earliest convenience. And so when I say we took the initiative, it's, it's because the finance department is not responsible for investments. Uh, Burley County has a combined auditor treasurer who was elected. Uh, Auditor Sponskowski was elected in November of twenty twenty two. He took office in April of twenty twenty threes. Ultimately, as an elected official, Auditor Sponskowski is responsible for the investment of funds. However, historically, when the offices of auditor and treasurer were combined, the treasurer became the deputy auditor treasurer and continued doing the treasurer duties, including investing. And so our department learned this, uh, looking at some old documents on the drive, we found some old testimony from, uh, auditor glut. Uh, and so adding to that, the job description of the deputy auditor treasurer states, manage and perform fund investment activities and monitors cash flow requirements of county, including preparation of required reports and apportioning various funds to proper districts and custodial accounts for twenty five percent of that position's time. And so consequently, the duty to invest county funds may statutorily belong to the auditor treasurer, but it has been delegated to the deputy auditor treasurer. However, at the end of the day, I, it does, the delegation flows from the auditor treasurer's statutory authority. So the investment policy requires that we we report on two areas, which are investment return and the transactions, uh, transacted during the quarter. There are two optional areas we can report on, areas of policy concern and suggested or planned revision of investment strategies. But I think, uh, in the interest of time, I was, I will cover the required items tonight. So item number one is investment return. Our policy requires we design a portfolio with the objective of of attaining a market rate of return. The market rate of return for the county might be different than a Wall Street bank because we have, uh, we're restricted on what we can invest in based on the century code. And so to determine whether we attained a market rate of return, we benchmarked our investment portfolio. We used US treasuries as a benchmark. We retrieved historical daily interest rates from the US treasury and we benchmarked three month investments against three month treasuries, six against six, twelve against twelve, et cetera. For money markets or demand deposits, we used one month treasuries as a benchmark. Uh, the reason we did this is because if someone's looking for liquidity, they can invest on a rolling basis in one month treasuries. So you have a treasury maturing this week, then next week, then next week, then next week, and so forth. And so you're constantly getting an infusion of cash. So the benchmark assumes we are investing efficiently. Investing efficiently means that we do not have idle or uninvested cash. So when something matures, uh, we would receive the cash and we would invest it immediately. Uh, so we do not lose days of interest under an efficient investment plan. So as an example of, uh, of benchmarking, if we suppose that we bought a one year CD on July first, twenty twenty three. In this report, we would benchmark this against a one year treasury bought on the same day using the rates that we downloaded from the US treasury. So for Q one, twenty twenty four, Burley County underperformed the benchmark by one hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars. Or to put it another way, had the county invested its funds efficiently in US treasuries, we would have made another hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars during quarter one of twenty twenty four. This amounts to a little more than ten thousand dollars a week that were essentially foregoing or losing. So why did we underperform? We lost ninety thousand dollars in the quarter due to a failure to invest funds. And we lost forty six thousand dollars due to poor investment choices, mainly prioritizing convenience over yield. So of the uninvested funds, fifty six thousand dollars came from failing to in, to invest our burly sales tax funds in the Bank of North Dakota. Uh, we also failed to invest Morton County funds, which we are empowered to do under our joint powers agreement, or I should say some Morton County funds, which we are empowered to do. Well, we'll explore the impact on Morton County and on our bond repayment during, uh, the twenty twenty three annual report. On average, the county had four point seven million dollars in uninvested funds in the Bank of North Dakota during every day of the quarter. The rest of the funds in BND were invested in treasuries, so the county clearly had the capacity to invest this cash rather than to let it sit uninvested. So we are continuing to see uninvested funds in our BND accounts in quarter four. Of the uninvested funds, the other thirty four thousand dollars came from a failure to invest funds at Wells Fargo. We had three million dollars uninvested at Wells Fargo during every day of the quarter. These funds were in an operating account called the zero balance account. The account is designed so that the balance is at zero dollars overnight. Uh, as the county draws on the account during the day, the account goes negative, so sort of like a bar tab. And at the end of the day, Wells Fargo will sweep cash from the money market into the operating account to bring the balance up to zero. So the cash stays invested in the money market throughout the day. We go negative. At the end of the day, Wells Fargo sends out, you know, batches all of our transactions and moves money over for us. So we're able to earn that money during the day and then again overnight, especially overnight. So rather than leave the balance at zero dollars overnight, as the account is designed to do, the auditor treasurer's office instructed Wells Fargo to leave three million dollars in the account overnight. The finance department discovered the three million dollar balance in the zero balance account. We first brought the issue to the county auditor treasurer during a May investment meeting and we met with what I would describe as resistance from the county auditor treasurer's office when it came to our idea to lower the account balance to zero dollars. In total, it took at least three meetings and thirteen email exchanges between the finance department and the auditor treasurer's office over the course of almost five months to lower the account balance to zero dollars. It took Wells Fargo only three days to make the change on their end once they were notified. And during the almost five months where we were, the finance department was trying to, uh, fix the account, the county lost around fifty thousand dollars in interest that we would have otherwise earned. So that concludes the uninvested funds. The second area where the county underperformed was our investment choices. We lost forty six thousand dollars during the quarter due to making poor investment choices. Uh, as I said, prioritizing convenience over yield. Uh, the, the first area was in the money markets. The county has eighty percent of its non-sales tax investments in the money markets. Sales tax is in a trust account with BND, so that's kind of a, a separate thing. But of the other funds that we're really actively investing, I mean, we're actively, actively investing those, but of our operating funds and general fund reserves and so forth, eighty percent is in money markets. The money markets underperformed treasuries in every month of the quarter. In total, the county's money markets underperformed the benchmark of a one month treasury by twenty five thousand dollars during the quarter. The way the investment policy reads is that, um, liquidity needs are at a higher priority than yield. In other words, you don't want to have your money invested if you need it. So you need to manage your liquidity. In this case, we have no liquidity needs because a lot of these are, um, reserve funds, ARPA funds, and therefore we should be going for the higher yield. That's kind of the, the logic here. The other area where we underperformed was in, in certificates of deposit. The county had approximately fifteen million in CDs during the quarter. Most of the CDs were purchased in twenty twenty three. In every case, where, when the county purchased a CD, a treasury was a better investment, including the CDs purchased in twenty twenty three. In total, the county CDs underperformed the benchmark by twenty one thousand dollars during the quarter. So the second required area, uh, of, of our report is in the investment, in the, in the transactions transacted during the quarter. I think I captioned these as investment decisions in the report. The county made only two active investment decisions during the quarter. The first was at the Bank of North Dakota. It was a transaction on February second to invest sales taxes received on January twenty third and an investment that matured on January thirty first. The county received sales taxes monthly. However, February and March sales taxes were not invested during the quarter. One other note matured, but the county did not reinvest it during the quarter. The second investment decision what made was to reinvest a CD that matured during the quarter. This was a six million dollar CD that matured at Choice Bank on February twenty eighth. The county reinvested the CD with Choice Bank on the same day. It's not clear whether the county received bids from other banks before reinvesting with Choice. Uh, we reinvested the, the CD with three, six and twelve month maturities. Every CD we selected yielded less than a comparable treasury. So for example, we purchased a three month CD for two point four million yielding four percent. On that same day, a three month treasury yielded five point three eight percent. The county also made several passive investment decisions during the quarter. The first was to allow CDs purchased at First International in twenty twenty three for seven point five million to mature into money markets. The CDs yielded less than treasuries when they were originally purchased and the money market yielded less than treasuries when we deposited the proceeds from the CDs. Uh, there was no liquidity need for a money market because CDs were in ARPA funds and general fund reserves. And so therefore, the county should have selected the higher yielding securities according to our investment policy, which in this case were treasuries. Uh, the next passive decision was to allow sales taxes to sit uninvested in BND. Uh, these were received monthly and they earned, I think, point six, six tenths of one percent at BND. The third passive investment decision was to leave maturing notes uninvested. A treasury note matured on February twenty ninth and the proceeds were uninvested past the, sat uninvested in BND past the end of the quarter, earning, as I just mentioned, six tenths of a percent. In, in the other case, a CD matured at BNC National Bank on March twenty eighth. We received a check for one point two million on April eleventh. We deposited that check in Wells Fargo on April twelfth. So the, the proceeds from this CD of one point two million were uninvested for two weeks while in transit, costing the county over two thousand dollars in lost interest. The alternative decision here would be to require the bank to wire the money the same day. So that, that concludes the two required, uh, reporting elements. Um, I could stand for any questions?
Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Who, who is, this may sound like a dumb question, but who is the finance department? Who's the chairman, who is in it, and who makes the decisions?
The finance department is myself and a, the deputy finance director, Taylor Schmidt.
That's just, just the two of you?
The finance department.
Okay.
And, and they, they work under the Burley County Commission.
I'm sorry, he, I'm sorry, they work where?
They work under the Burley County Commission. You remember conversations we held earlier that, um, that we kept them separate from the auditor's office simply for this checks and balance, and this is why.
So that's your portfolio, right? Okay, so you're the, you're the, you're the portfolio and the, and you're two people in your department, the, the Burley County Finance Department.
Right, and I'll point out that I requested those guys to look into this and, and give us a, a summary of what's going on. And I'll also point out that I was actively involved in the, the, uh, production of the, uh, investment policy.
Where do we begin? Where do we start? We've got a mess, don't we?
Sure.
A big mess. It's a mess, isn't it?
So what was the total number again that, uh, was realized and what was the number that should have been realized?
I could tell you that in a moment here. Our interest earned in the quarter was eight hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty four dollars. The benchmarked interest was nine hundred and forty six thousand, ninety one dollars. So the benchmarked interest, interest was one hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and thirty eight dollars more than the amount realized.
Less.
For one quarter.
Mr. Chairman, not to
Commissioner Woodcox.
makes this any worse, but what do we do if we go back into twenty twenty three?
That's, we, I asked, I have asked them to go ahead and look back to give us an understanding of what exactly was happening throughout twenty three also. They had their hands very full coming up with just the first quarter of twenty four. And I'll remind you, we're at, in the middle of the last quarter of twenty four. Estimates that I've heard kind of beat around is that we've had an interest income loss or a, or a interest potential that has cost us over a million dollars already.
For what?
From twenty three and twenty four. So I'm sure you're just as stunned as I was when they started telling me the numbers. I, I think that we're gonna, we're gonna continue to deal with this over probably the next couple of meetings. Um, I have asked the finance department to do a bunch more legwork on this and we're gonna look at certainly what kind of changes we could make to the policy or I'll work with the state's attorney on what we need to do, if anything, um, at this point. I don't know that there's any decision required of this item at this point. Um, unless you have any additional questions, we're gonna move on.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Any indication of fraud?
I'll tell you this, I had a hard time figuring out where our proceeds were from the CD I mentioned of one point two million dollars because I could see that it matured on the twenty eighth of March. But I could find no record of it, um, until I dug into the tack, into the cash receiving portion and then I could see that it, it came through on the eleventh. And, and then, so we get the check and it gets receipted into the system. But then the next day, we do like a desk deposit type of thing. Apparently, we can scan it at the desk and get it to Wells Fargo. I think what happened, so I was a little concerned there, but what I think what happened is somebody made money on that one point two million dollars. And it wasn't the county, I think it was the bank. So I think they just held off on sending the check. So I think they just held off on sending the check for about a week and a half and probably invested our money. And then they finally put it in the mail begrudgingly, you know, like April 8th or 9th, and it gets to us two or three days later. Or it could be the postal service. I've heard concerns about that too. But 5% interest environment, $1.2 million is a lot of money to part with if you're a bank.
Okay. In an earlier conversation, you referred to, in some ways, about the numbers of emails that are going back and forth and your interaction with the Auditor's Office. And you gave me a number of emails just since October 10th.
Since October 10th.
Can you lighten the board a little, please?
Our Deputy Finance Director has been, I've tried as much as possible to turn the investment piece over to him. He's got a background with cash management and so forth. Since October 10th, he has been trying through the County Auditor Treasurer to invest two or three different, three or four different items at Bank of North Dakota. Sales tax, I think we may have had a note that matured, and then there may have been, there was some cash in an account. So three, maybe four items. And as of this afternoon, we are at, I asked him to count the number of emails, and we are at 48 emails back and forth between our office, the County Auditor Treasurer's Office, Bank of North Dakota, and there's still one of those items has not yet been invested. And I think that came through October 21st, a sales tax deposit from Morton County, and after 48 emails is still not invested.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wood.
On that, the sales tax that we received for all this length of time is all from the jail. And we have been investing that properly for a long time. What happened? We got away from, I would think that would be set up automatically, and we got it, it would automatically be invested in the best rate we can get. But apparently, we did that for quite a while. Now we're off the beaten path, and we're not investing it at all, apparently, in some cases. So something...
Two different things, Commissioner.
We'll talk about sales tax dollars in a minute. Well, weren't invested at all.
There are...
And that sales tax is, the only sales tax we collect is from the jail, right? At that time?
Yeah. BND is our trust officer. They're not our investment guy. And so, under the bond documents, the Burley County Auditor is the only person who can invest sales tax proceeds for Burley and Morton County. And so, the Burley County Auditor needs to direct the trust officer to invest the money when it either matures or as we get it. I looked back at, I think it was December 2022, and I saw only $5 million out of $20 million invested in BND. So it's, yeah, and it's gone back and forth. I mean, there are periods where there's long periods of uninvested funds, but you know, during that whole time, this position of Deputy Auditor Treasurer has been filled. So it's not as if we didn't have somebody in that role during that period. It wasn't a turnover thing. It's just apparent, I don't know what it is.
Okay.
Another, I know where we're headed. How can we, how are we gonna handle this?
We're not gonna handle it right now. We've got some heavy lifting to do, and we have some more understanding to do. We have to get, we have to understand the size and scope of this. And there's going to be additional conversations, but not at this time. We're not here to make a decision.
No.
The whole point in doing this is so that the Burley County Commission is as aware as I am of the conversations that I've been having regarding Burley County finances, and I thought it was just very important that you guys get an understanding so that you'll understand the additional information that's coming forward. So with that being said, we're gonna move on. Thank you, Lee. Next item on the agenda.
Commissioner, would I be able to approach at all?
No.
Okay. So you don't want to hear it from the auditor's side?
No. Not right now. This is not a, we're not making any decisions. We're looking for information. There's more information to come, and you'll have a chance to weigh in on that. Okay. Next item on the agenda, CO2 update. We added this to the agenda because of the decision on Friday.
Chair, just before we get into the CO2 discussion, is there anybody from Summit Carbon Solutions here? Anyone from Summit Carbon Solutions in the room tonight? No, there is not. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for that, Commissioner Parkin. Okay, this was on the agenda. It was intended that it would be an update. Commissioner Schwab was gonna lead off on that. And before he does, I wanted to let you know that in case there's any doubt, the North Dakota Public Service Commission decided to grant a permit to Summit Carbon Solutions for a CO2 pipeline in North Dakota. And immediately after that decision, I was online watching it, but our attorney that was at the meeting called me, and he was letting me know that he was not gonna be able to be here today to give us additional information. And what I did is I asked that he work along with the State's Attorney to determine options for us moving forward. We have a window that if we're going to appeal the decision of the North Dakota Public Service Commission, we have to do it within 30 days of the decision, which was this past Friday, the 15th. So by December 15th, we'll have to have some sort of a decision. And I don't think we're anywhere near being able to make a decision on that, what the possible grounds for an appeal are gonna be and whatnot. So from my perspective of that, of that permit being granted, we need to basically get our ducks in a row to make a decision on something to move forward. Now, I know a lot of people are here that want to speak to the issue, and I'm willing to give them a chance to say whatever's on their mind, because I know they've put a lot of time into this as well as the rest of us. So I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Schwab for any comments you have.
Before you do that, if I could just throw in, so the December 15th deadline is when things have to be filed with the court for an appeal, which means a decision needs to be made well in advance of that so that documentation can be done, things can be written up to be filed with the court, just so we have the timeline clear.
Okay. One of the thoughts I had in that regard is depending on how much time you need, and that's, I'm hoping that you and our counsel can work through that, and if need be, we'll schedule a special meeting of the Burley County Commission if need be. Because I imagine that would be an executive session type of thing anyway.
Correct, if it's litigation, which it is.
It is.
So, yes.
We'll work together on that.
That was my question.
Okay. Commissioner Schwab?
The decision by the Public Service Commission was disappointing. Another, and I also want to apologize to the people, there'd be more people here today. At the last meeting, I instructed this thing, a summit continuation to be on the agenda, and that didn't happen. And mistakes can happen and whatever, but I'm not happy with that, but we'll have to move on. So what I did was I went on the radio last Friday in the afternoon to let people know and let them know that Chair Bitner would let you speak, vent, whatever the hell you want to say, because it doesn't seem like the idiots up at the Capitol understand they're producing more carbon, pumping carbon up here than what they're getting rid of. So these doomcoats up there, there's no use trying to get to them because they don't understand math. So I think let the public speak.
Okay. Any other commissioners want to weigh in before I open it up to the public? All right. The only thing I would ask is that we don't needlessly repeat ourselves. I think you're welcome to come up to the mic, and please give your name for the record, and let us know what your thoughts are on this, if you want.
My name is Curtis Junt.
Welcome, Curtis.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Bitner, Commissioners, for the opportunity. I did hear you on the radio on Friday, by the way. Commissioner Schwab, thank you for doing that, because I would not have known, and I would not have been here. It was disappointing, the approval and unanimous at that, but it wasn't surprising. And it wasn't surprising that it came five days after the November 5th election. Gee, does that sound familiar? Three days after the November 2020 election, the pharmaceuticals, the anti-Trump pharmaceuticals came out, and they had, all of a sudden, had a vaccine? It's deja vu all over again, Yogi Berra, and this is politics that the PSC played. But we've been saying this for a year, that Chair Christman would do this. The ruling was not surprising, and the only way that I could have shot, I could shoot more holes in this 29 pages is if I went to the indoor range with my nine mil and unloaded about 10 clips, because there are so many holes in this ruling. Starting out with page three, the issues to be considered in the application for certificate of corridor compatibility and route permit. Now, these are two things, two separate things that they chose to combine, which under state statute they could do. This is all things you all know here. Number one, will construction operation maintenance of the facility at the proposed location produce minimal adverse effects on the environment and upon the welfare of the citizens of North Dakota? Now, if you go down and read, I don't know, probably about 10 pages down, and you read what they talk about different testimony. There's testimony from landowners and Chair Bitner and a number of us, most people in the room here, we attended 14-hour hearings. We heard many, many landowners testify on how they were treated, the tactics, and what, how this would impact their well-being. You go down through here, the conclusions made by the North Dakota PSC, every item that was brought to the PSC's attention by the public as a concern, they use testimony that Summit gave as a reason that it's gonna be okay. It's gonna be okay, because, and everyone, even the insurance liability, two appraisers that Summit provided, we were at the hearing, most of the people here were there, said, oh, no impact. Oh, really? You have how much experience with real estate appraisal where there's a CO2 pipeline? Zero! Then, our Chad Walker, who along with a couple others as an intervening group, landowners impacted, and as a developer, Chad and a number of others, there were three of them that were intervenors till Burley County took over, they're heavily impacted. Liability-wise, development, real estate value-wise, Chad testified that I have lots up in Promontory Point that have a natural gas line on. Natural gas, a totally different animal than a CO2 pipeline. Natural gas pipeline erupts, it's not gonna migrate for thousands of feet and miles as an affixient. Natural gas doesn't do that. It's half the weight of air. You may have an explosion, but we have odorant in it. But he still said, those are the last lots to be sold because they have an easement on them. That was the last part of that paragraph, but the PSC said, because of these other two guys, there's not gonna be an issue. There is an issue. We have our own developers saying there's going to be an issue, and one of our most reputable, successful developers. So what, and if I'm a little energized here, it's not because my batteries got recharged because I've been a little inflamed for about three, four days on this. So if you look at the North Dakota Century Code and what they did to our county, and Emmons County, and all the counties, the PSC has in their order that they have washed their hands, it's out of their jurisdiction for safety. They waved the white flag on safety. Now, everything all over this is they're gonna look out for the welfare of the citizens. The welfare meaning, first and foremost, health and safety, then financial and economic wellbeings. This is what you all tried to do 18 months plus ago. You tried to not only look out for the financial and economic well-being of the county and its growth, east and west, because in the infinite wisdom of this group of ag people who want to become a pipeline company, got guys from Houston, Texas, Jim Powell, and a bunch of others to lay out a pipeline east and north of Bismarck where we're gonna grow, without coming and conferring with all of you, and decided that that was gonna be a good deal. Why do you suppose they figured that was gonna fly? Because, as you all know, we've not just been battling to get the right thing done with, again, Summit and the PSC. We have our governor, oh, he's gonna be in Fargo now, hmm, he's 200 miles away. We have Mike LaFour and David Hoag, our two leaders of our legislature, one's in Minot, one's in Dickinson, hmm, how close are you? Randy Christman on Friday said, you know, I live 10 miles away from the DGC pipeline. That's a 12-inch line. Whoop-de-frickin'-doo-dee. We have a 24-inch line running east and north, cutting off our growth of Bismarck. That's equivalent to almost six of those 12-inch pipelines. So all of these people, our legislators, all of our leaders in the state, we have been fighting, and they've all been putting pressure on publicly. These three PSC members know what their position is, they know where the big money is, and who do we have right here? We have been trying to defend ourselves and get the right thing done in our state, who's now gonna contribute, what, 50, 60 million dollars in property taxes to Summit? We have tried on our own to not only battle against the PSC doing the right thing and Summit, but all of our political leaders in the state, and I guarantee you, I guarantee you, as somebody who's been involved in safety in the pipeline industry for much of my career, not John Hoven, Kevin Kramer, Kelly Armstrong, Doug Burgum, or anyone in the legislature had one clue, not one clue of the safety problems that come with putting 2,200 PSI CO2 in a pipeline. Not one, we're told. You know what they were told? The same thing as the landowners. It's in your beer. It's in your pop. You exhale it. What can be, what can happen? Our landowners were told, it's safer than a natural gas pipeline. So, in the North Dakota Century Code, under, and I don't know if I have the right chapter number, if this is old numbering, but anyway, there's a chapter in there, effective issuance of certificate or permit, local land use zoning, building rules, regulations, and ordinances. Now, in this Century Code paragraph, you all as a county have a right to have ordinances. It says, "A certificate of site compatibility," that's the corridor, "shall not supersede or preempt," oh, by the way, and it says, "for an electric energy conversion facility." So I don't know if this is old that I got here. Nevertheless, "it shall not supersede or preempt any local land use zoning or building rules, regulations, or ordinances, and a site may not be designated which violates local land use zoning or building rules, regulations, or ordinances." Then you go down, and it talks about that our ordinances, the commission can make a decision to supersede if they view our ordinances as being unreasonably restricted. Wow, now this is where it really gets me going. So we have the PSC, who has nobody with any knowledge about plume modeling and CO2 ruptures and what can happen, have now decided that you all, who are looking out not only for our health, safety, but our financial and economic well-being and the growth of our county, and we carry the load for city, the city too, you tried to protect all those interests, but these folks at the PSC who do not have the qualifications to decide that what we did here over 18 months ago was too restrictive, it's BS. And you know what? I'm not happy, as a citizen, and I don't think anyone else here is either, that the PSC made that decision, because it's wrong. You, we do not, we don't have the plume modeling, we have no idea. They apparently must have seen something, oh, what made them determine that it's all gonna be okay? You, we have, you have every right to write an ordinance to protect not only the people, the livestock, the horses, the landowners, but our city and its growth, and they took that away, and I'm extremely disturbed about that. And I'm here to ask you all to take that, you know, under advisement and help us in the county do something about that, because I don't think they're the ones that should have made that decision, first and foremost. And the last thing I want to address is, I sat, as did almost all these people here, through dozens and dozens of... through dozens and dozens of hours of testimony in 23 and 24. And I, we listened to landowners give their testimony through tears. I also have been contacted by so many of them, not just in North Dakota, but South Dakota and Iowa and Nebraska. These people don't sleep at night, they're stressed out, and I listened to these same people that the North Dakota PSC did, but apparently the welfare of the citizens is being covered, it's being covered. You know why? Because apparently Summit said so. So I, tactics fair? Well, I'm not sure. If you're told that it's as safe as a natural gas pipeline and it's in our beer and we exhale it and nothing to worry about, you know, if I were a landowner and they came to me, and, and somebody who's been in the oil and gas industry, and they came to me and said, hey Kurt, we want to put a CO2 compressed pipeline at 2,200 PSI, and by the way, it's going to be 24-inch. I don't care if it's eight-inch or 12-inch or 24-inch, it's going to be running at 2,200 PSI or more. We're going to run it across your land. And oh, by the way, I've heard this from people in three, four states, 700 feet, 500 feet from their bedroom window, close to their kid's rural school? Are you flipping kidding me? And then what, what's the first thing I'm going to ask? Any normal person should ask. Well, what, what happens if it ruptures? Whether, whether it's due to pipe failure or I hit it with my tractor because it sunk six feet into the ground? What happens if it ruptures? What, what will my family be exposed to? What do I have to worry about? And, and, and what will they be exposed to? And then how do I keep them safe? Can you tell me that Summit? Can you please tell me that before I allow you to put this on my land? No, we cannot do that because if we let you know that, then terrorists could get ahold of that and, you know, that could, that could be a bad thing. You know what my response to that would be? So what you really want to do is put a weapon of mass destruction across my land. Wow, that feels really good. The one thing I'd want to know before I'd ever sign a damn easement, you won't even tell me. You will not tell me. Now, I have never in 42 and a half years of being part of any project, pipelines, gathering systems, ever, ever treated landowners this way, been, had a transparency issue, or ever heard of the tactics that are being used, which, you know, probably shouldn't surprise any of you that I'm guessing the legal fees to this, and if you're listening right now, I'm sure your legal fees are more than your engineering fees and that's pretty frightening. But that just shows you what happens when an ag company tries to build a pipeline company. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kurt.
Wait, I do have one more thing to say.
All right, go ahead.
I have one more thing to say.
Well said by him.
They can criticize me and anyone else all you want about any numbers and stuff that we come up with, but you have refused to give us any information about anyone living in proximity, even a mile, two miles, 1,000 feet. Nobody has a clue and that's by design. But I did some calculations and here's a calculation. This pipeline running east and north of Bismarck and through Emmons County, 24-inch pipeline, if that CO2 is at 50 degrees in the ground and it's at 2,183 PSI and that pipeline has a rupture and it's 20 miles between block valves, they're not going to be able to stop the leak. They got to let it blow down just like they did in Starsh, Mississippi. You, you can't even get close to there. That's 100% CO2 and it's minus 106 degrees, cryogenic. So even if you have breathing apparatus on, you're going to freeze to death. They, they can't, they can't, they have to let it blow down to atmosphere. Well, guess what? That 20 miles is 331,732 cubic feet of CO2 at 2,183 PSI and 50 degrees. You know what that becomes when it's all above ground? It expands 1,178 times and will disperse at 14.7 PSI, 391,729,380 cubic feet at 14.7 atmospheric pressure and 32 degrees. Okay? 1178 times. So I did another calculation. What if? Okay. Here it is. What if I took that 391,729,000 cubic feet and I took it out of the pipe? And I just said, okay, what would that look like in a cylinder above ground, just volume-wise? Just take it out of the pipe at 2,183 PSI and 50 degrees and put it above ground at eight feet deep? How, what would the radius of that cylinder be eight feet deep? At 8% concentration. Now, remember, 8%, you don't have a lot of time to get rescued. So 8%, we are talking, at 8% CO2, eight feet high, the radius is 16.5 miles. Okay, now keep in mind that there would have to be absolutely zero wind and it would come up and would all just form a cylinder. It's going to move in a teardrop kind of a plume and, and the, the 391 million cubic feet is if they shut the valves off immediately upon, immediately, instantaneous. It's going to keep flowing CO2. So obviously by the time the valves are shut, you're going to be, you're going to be releasing more than 391 million cubic feet above ground and it's going to be moving along with the wind. So you know what Summit, you didn't give us any information, but I'm here to tell you that we got below zero temps coming up, that's going to make it more dense, and we've got, we have mornings when there's just a five mile an hour wind. And that pipeline here's ruptures, it's going to move in the low line valleys and it's going to stay there in very high concentration. But you won't tell us, you won't tell us, but I'm here to tell you that this pipeline, if it has one rupture anywhere close to a populated area or even a landowner, it is not going to be a pretty scene. So until you come out and actually show us the numbers and show us what we're up against, we're going to, we're going to start making our own determination somehow because we are left with having to defend ourselves with this commission right here. This commission is the only five people that have done anything and Emmons County to try to keep us safe. Not our governor, not our federal delegation, not our, I mean, hell, this summer, LaFour and, and Hoag come out with a letter to the editor in the Fargo Forum, beating their chests about they're the ones 15 years ago started this whole thing. Well, you know what? Now we know who to point the finger at when this all goes south. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you for having this meeting. During the past two years, I've attended five days of Public Service Commissioners hearings in different places, not all of them, but some of them. I recall hearing concerned citizens speaking about how this pack was going to adversely affect their lives and their communities where they live. I don't recall any citizens who were not receiving money in some manner, shape, or form in this project in favor of the pipeline. I recall hearing one legislator speak in favor of the CO2 pipeline. This morning, I called the Public Service Commission to request a number of people that, that spoke, and I've listed four of them there, who spoke against carbon dioxide pipeline, the number who spoke in favor of the carbon, carbon dioxide pipeline, the number of citizens who spoke in favor of the carbon dioxide pipeline who were not getting paid in some manner, shape, or form, and the number of out-of-state people who spoke in favor of the pipeline. I was informed that this data is not collected, but that if I wanted to, I could come to the department and they would direct me to the place where I could listen to the testimony and collect the information myself. I don't know how many days it did, but I wasn't, there was more than five days of testimony. I did, I didn't go to Wappin or out of the Litton, Bismarck, Mandan area. The person I spoke was very considerate and cooperative and they did the best they could. I then also emailed them with the same request, thinking I'd get something in email, and I did. I didn't notice it that they sent it back already about 12 o'clock at noon, but also invited me to come in and, and look at it. I question how the Public Service Commissioners could approve this dangerous, supercritical CO2 pipeline, like Kurt just explained, without keeping track of the basic data of how many people in North Dakota came out and spoke for it or against it or anything else. They gave up their time, their effort, and at their own expense to go and speak, and they don't have any of this data. And for days it happened. And as you could tell from Kurt, we can't get a plume model because it's too dangerous to give to us the public. And they would not give a plume model. I can visual a plume model that Mr. Junt just gave us, and that's if it's shut off immediately, just what's in that 20 miles of pipe. And if it takes them an hour or two to shut it down? Unbelievable. The plume model presented was too dangerous. I've heard some people use the word when discussing this, and I'm trying not to cover stuff that Mr. Junt covered or that others did. I've heard that some people use the word recall should be occurring. Also remember at the meeting on Friday, I was there, and I forget the exact words that the chairman said, but it was, it was not the same words, but something similar to it. It was either unreasonably restrictive he used, or it was ridiculous, or it was too out, way out, too out of line to go with the setback that you, the county commissioners, requested. And I did make the mention to him afterwards. I didn't think, I thought 500 feet or the distance you guys requested was still too ridiculous, it should be a lot further. And I remember my testimony, I'd said it should be 10 to 20 miles away from Bismarck so that if there's a big rupture, it isn't going to impact here and it will not box in Bismarck's growth to either the north or to the east. Also looked in the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, Articles 1.2 states, "All political power is inherent in the people. Government is instituted for the protection, security, and benefits of the people." Protection, security, and benefit. To me, that's safety. And the Public Service Commissioner's speaker said they were not into the safety. That was not one of their concerns. It is to me as a citizen, and I can tell it is from all of you too from past meetings. To me, that's a big, single issue for doing something about this, at least in my opinion. I hope that, that you as a commission take appropriate action to protect the safety of the citizens of Burleigh County. And thank you very much for all your hard work. God bless you.
Thank you, Gavin. I wanted to, I wanted to add something else in here. At one point, and I know a lot of people are aware of this, but I want to make sure that anybody that's watching and anybody in the room knows that we are looking for, and I have a reasonable list already, but we're looking for people that either signed easements or declined to sign easements, it doesn't matter, under threat of eminent domain being used. So if anybody's out there and you felt threatened or intimidated or, or that was used as a, as a possible reason that you better sign this now because we're going to do eminent domain, I want to know about it. I want the names and numbers or addresses of anybody that may have been threatened that way. Okay, so just wanted to put that in here. Anybody else want to speak? I know those guys are, those guys have done a really good job. Commissioner Schwab, go ahead.
I don't think a lot of people understand, but it was an eye, not an eye-opener, but an ear-opener. I believe it was yesterday on the radio, they were talking about this pipeline and CO2 bombs are weapons of war that they're making. Believe it or not, what a coincidence. So, you know, I thought, well, what the hell would they use them for? Trenches, low areas. I believe, am I right?
Tunnels.
They have developed them.
Tunnel warfare.
There you are. It's, what we got is a high-pressure CO2 bomb. And now it used to be 2,000 miles, now it's 2,500 miles. So they should be well over, well over, close to creating a ton and a half carbon to move a ton. Would I be correct?
Can I, can I speak?
Yes.
Sure you can.
Okay.
We're all on the same page.
So just, yeah, just, you're absolutely correct, Commissioner Schwab, because CO2 is 1.53 times heavier than air. So it'll move to all the low line areas, it'll go fill those trenches first, boom, they're suffocated, they're goners. So there's a gentleman who gave a, kind of a counterpart to me and through a lot of the county meetings that the opposition and the, and the vote no on RL 21 in South Dakota, he gave a, he worked in the Bakken, geologist, geological engineer, and he said they finished doing a frac job using CO2. Now, there's nitrogen used or CO2. And he said they had liquefied CO2 leftover, leftover in the tanker and they didn't want to haul it. They backed up to a ravine valley and they released it. This was back in the 80s when, you know, things like that were done. And he said the CO2, of course, it comes out, moves from into a liquid, then it's to a solid and sublimes into a gas, but you'll see that white, cryogenic and freezes all the water vapor in the air, and then it just warms up and it turns into an invisible gas. It went down the valley into the ravine area where there just happened to be a prairie dog town down there. Not one prairie dog left. The rancher was pleased. He was happy. He said, you know, this might be a way, instead of having all my buddies and family come out and, you know, shoot them, and it, it wiped them all out without, without any problem. But there was one other thing I was going to say. What were you talking about when I, I kind of got distracted there with that?
The threat of eminent domain is what I'm saying.
No, anyway, there, oh, I'm sorry, I just, there's been so much stuff on my mind on this whole thing, but, oh, yeah, no, that's not it. But I mean, the whole thing about this, the CO2 is, we are now, they used to say 18 million ton a year, it's now 19 million ton a year, and they're still going after more and more industrial loads. Oh, I know what I was going to say, you asked about water power. There's probably going to be in December, the Minnesota PUC, when it comes to Summit, has one, they applied for, to take the CO2 from the Fergus Falls Green Plains Plant, .19 metric tons, .19 million metric tons a year. That's 10% of Summit's overall throughput coming by Bismarck. It's going into a 4-inch line at Fergus Falls in Otter Tail County. They're going to be pulling water from groundwater resources. It's a heavily irrigated corn belt area. In their application, which I read, and they're probably going to get approval, going into this 4-inch line, 13.5 million gallons of water a year and 38,500 kilowatt-hours of power, which is 38.5 gigawatts or 38,500 megawatts for, for just, that's just for .19 million metric tons going into a 4-inch line. This is massive amounts of water, massive amounts of power, and they'll be using natural gas here and there too. So your assumption, Commissioner Schwab, that they're probably going to create as much CO2 as they're going, you know, to just get this all done? When you look at the power, our power still comes from 60% fossil fuels, coal and natural gas. Well, they're going to be using gigawatts galore. Then you look at water and you look at the electricity they're using and their natural gas through the, just getting this all captured, cooled, compressed, shoved all the way up to North Dakota and then everything that's going to go, be involved in North Dakota. Your assumption is probably correct. Nobody's done that calculation, but we're talking about buco amounts of water, power, and natural gas that are going to be used in this whole scheme, if you will. And it makes absolutely zero sense because what's lost on all this now is it's going to benefit the environment, which is, nobody talks about that anymore because you know what? It's not measurable. We're spending federal and state tax dollars to supposedly benefit the climate, but nobody anywhere will ever tell us what the benefit side is of the equation. And most, and all the costs right now, once this thing is built and operational, the costs are being borne by us and the risks all the way along the pipeline. So this is a really lopsided economic equation and not one of the investors in Summit Carbon Solutions would ever invest $1 without knowing what the benefit's going to be. But it's okay to invest our dollars, federal and state, without us knowing anything. But now- But now it's become, well, look at all the jobs. All the people that are for it now, engineering firms, unions, I mean, it's all jobs now. Look what it's going to do. I mean, it has nothing to do with what started this whole thing, and that's, somebody got everybody to believe decades ago that CO2 was the devil. And it's not. If you take CO2 and you keep reducing it out of our, the air we breathe, and you drop it down into the 200 parts per, 200 parts per million from the 400, we, we, and you keep, if we don't have CO2, we cease to exist. Everything in this room and all of us, we're all carbon. Carbon-built, carbon-based, and CO2 is the foundation of life. And if you reduce CO2 more and more, you will affect plant growth, you will affect, hence, crop growth, trees, oxygen. Where do, where do you think all our oxygen comes from? CO2 and photosynthesis, 51% comes out of the ocean, the rest comes from on land. Photosynthesis. So it doesn't make sense when a greenhouse goes from our 400 parts per million and they, they go up to 7,000 parts per million. And if anybody's walked into a greenhouse, it's like walking into a hyperbaric oxygen chamber. I mean, it's just, wow, you know? So if you ever have any upper respiratory problems, go to Plant Perfect and walk in there sometime. But I, I think it's time, we're getting close to Christmas, I think we need to call Cousin Eddie and have Cousin Eddie go find all these Summit people and get them down here in front of you and let them tell you what their risks are to their family and their friends and their horses and whatever. I, I want, I think Cousin Eddie needs to bring them in here so they can tell us what their risks are.
I don't think the reason why they're showing up is because they can't defend their position. And this thing started years and years ago. The Commerce Department is involved in it. We had talked about that last meeting.
2006.
2006?
2006 on the research I keep doing to find the impetus.
And they come up with this great idea, and it's a dog, no matter which way you look at it, but they, that should be shot, it's a rabbit dog. But, damn it, they started it, and they're going to, they're going to sig this thing on us.
They are.
And the thing about it is, I should let you vent, I'm venting.
No, Commissioner Schwab, but here's our only hope. So I know why President Trump kind of went along with some of this and fossil fuel industry, but, look, we, I'm cautiously optimistic, but, you know, what he said in his campaign, we know where RFK Jr.'s at on it, we know where JD Vance is at on it, we know where Ramaswami's at on it. We are $36 trillion in debt as a nation, we're going to be 40 trillion in debt when we stand up here and speak a year from now. We now spend over a trillion dollars on interest on our debt. That is more than our military budget. This is, we, we, we've hit peak stupid. We, this, and we are going to destroy our country.
Commissioner Bakken, thank you, Kurt.
Bottom line for me, it, it just, and it doesn't matter what position you're in as an elected official. You could be at this table, you could be at the city commission with Bismarck, you could be at the Public Service Commission. Your number-one job, your number-one duty as an elected official is to protect your constituents. It's about public safety. And beyond that, beyond the ability to perform that duty, when you're not given the information needed to address situations, there's a break in the system. And when we can't perform that duty of public safety because we're not given the information needed, there's something else awry. There's something wrong. And if they cannot come to this commission table, give us that plume modeling, tell us what they think is pertinent information and equipment and man-hours, all that is needed to protect the public in the event of an accident? We don't have fire departments because we know there's going to be a fire. It's what if? We have to have them just in case. And we can't perform that duty with this, hey, trust us, it's going to work. I've got a problem with that. That, that is a problem, and that is an issue. Your job, and I don't care where you are, from the governor's office on down, your number-one job in the state of North Dakota is to protect the population, its public safety. And we've got a very bad problem taking place right here in North Dakota that unfortunately not enough people, and the media for certain, is not paying enough attention to.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Woodcox.
I have a quick question, somebody might be able to answer the question. North Dakota's severe winters. We have freezing and thawing all the time, we all know it. We have water main breaks all the time in the winter. What, what is freezing, severe freezing due to this pipeline? I've never heard anybody.
Did you ever pick rocks in North Dakota, Jerry, growing up? Did you ever pick rocks growing up?
What's that have to do with, I'm talking about freezing of a pipeline?
Because things come to the surface. And when there's, you pick a rock field, you pick a field clean of rocks, what's happening next spring? You're picking it again.
Yeah. The freeze-thaw cycle.
So have anybody, have they, I've never heard any information on whether they have addressed this? Are they saying this pipeline is safe so it won't break and freezing?
Well, there's two, two answers to that. Number one, the federal government has decided frost really doesn't raise these rocks. So they must be meteorites. The second, the second thing is, I did read that Houston Outfits report. A bunch of clowns down in Houston, four foot is great, very, in that climate. Well, if anybody's been in the excavating business, I've been in it for 40-some years, I've hit frost at nine feet. If there's no snow color, cover and under roads, anything bare, the frost goes down. And people don't understand, when do things break? Like you take your average water line, it isn't because, it isn't because it's weak or anything, it's temperature change. So in the morning, when you go to work and you see the city is out there working on a water line, that night, that wa, that water in there absorbed heat from the earth, and then in the morning, everybody gets up, takes a shower, turns on the washing machine, and that warm water comes and hits that casing, boom, it breaks. And don't think that can happen with a high-pressured line. Would I be correct?
One of the many ways this thing could fail. They have 38 above-ground facilities and just like hydrants and curb stops that jack up, you know, up and up and down that, one of the things that stresses out water lines, they, they jack up and down the ground, and they've got 38 of those, I think that's the right number, in North Dakota. But there, there's a risk right there that, you know, frost heaving and stressing the pipe below ground.
Hey, does anybody else wish to speak on this item? I want you to know, I appreciate you being here.
Do you have the route for the pipeline?
Yeah.
The latest?
We, we have, I think we've all seen it. Yeah, you can go ahead and put it on the, what do you call it, if you want?
I'm Kevin Cheeby. That pipeline goes within a mile of Menocan School. What would happen there? You've got 60 to 80 kids in this school. Shelter in place? That's ridiculous.
Norton is like about a mile or less than a mile, Norton School.
Yeah, they were going to come through my land. They, there's the Meese Edition is right next to my land. 500 feet away from the Meese Edition, they were going to go through my land, and they did not tell anybody in this Meese Edition that it was going to be there. And they, I said, well, you don't have to tell them? No, we don't have to tell them, it's 500 feet, that's what we need to stay away. This is a, a terrible company, Summit Carbon Solution. I've caught them on my land three times, I did not get them permission to come on my land, and I caught surveyors on there three times. They actually asked me if I would take 1.2 million to come through a 24-acre housing development that I bought 30 years ago to keep the housing development out. And I said, what will you give me 66 and a half feet away to go a mile across my land? They said 45,000-plus damages. It's all housing out there. I mean, the Mariners got the Alba Ridge, there's a...
Did they define damages?
Yeah, it'd be around 15,000 to 20,000. And here's another thing. This is, I, I'm a no-tail farmer. They're going to tear up 100 feet for 2,400 miles. That's a negative impact on CO2. My land absorbs CO2. Everybody's land does, it pastures, no-tail land. If you take 2,400 miles times 100 feet wide, that for five years is a negative impact for CO2 capture. This pipeline should be shut down. The Kilauea volcano in Hawaii, I was there, I, when it was going off, puts out 8,500 metric tons a day. And there's 55 to 60 erupting volcanoes in the world. There's 1,500 active volcanoes in the world. If this, if two more volcanoes erupt next year, this pipeline's useless. That is how little this pipeline does. I don't understand why we're even thinking about it. It's a big land grab, is all it is.
Money.
Yes, it is money.
It's money.
But it's a land grab. Once, 99 years, my grandchildren would never be able to build on this thing.
I'll tell you one thing, I'll never buy a John Deere tractor.
I have them, I probably won't buy another one.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you for your input. Okay, before we move on, does anybody else wish to speak on this item? Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for coming in. I, I know that everybody in the room was, was here to support the ones that did speak, so there's not a need for everybody to speak, and I just want to thank you for being here. Commissioner Schwab.
I, I just want to say again, I'm sorry this item was on the agenda, I'm sure more people would have liked to come. I'm considering putting it on the gen, the agenda next meeting. Probably am going to, so kind of watch the agendas and, and you'll know.
Commissioner Schwab, I, I think in that regard, we'll just go ahead and direct that this be on the agenda for the next meeting, because at the very least, we'll want to talk about legal action, but we'll probably be having a special meeting before that because it may not give us enough time, but we'll put it on there as a placeholder.
Well, and have it, have it up first so these people can go home, they've got...
Right. Well, that's why I wanted to move this up, because they, you know, we're going to get to the kind of boring stuff here now, I think. Okay, thank you, folks. Next item on the agenda is Bismarck Parks and Rec Operations Manager Dave Mayer, Special Road Funds Grant.
For the, for the record, this, Parks and Rec is not boring.
Right, this is not boring stuff.
I used the wrong word. Normal.
Normal meetings.
Is that better?
Chairman Bittner and Commissioners, I caught that.
Normal.
I grinned when you said it, that's okay, that's okay.
Every now and then, yeah.
Good evening, and...
Everybody clear out for a second?
There's a bunch here. I took, I took a couple.
Okay, all right. Good evening. Within your packet was a, a simple statement letter that was put together by our Executive Director requesting board, I guess, support, endorsement for the Park District to submit for a state of North Dakota Special Road Fund Grant project. Similar to the way, what we had requested when we submitted for the TA Grant, Transportation Alternatives Grant for the Shared Use Path Project. The state of North Dakota recognizes the Park Districts as a political subdivision, but not as an eligible local public agency for the money to go straight to. So in this kind of a grant program or the TA Grant Program, we need to request, depending on the jurisdiction, if it's in the county or the city, we request from the city or the county to endorse the project and basically be the pass-through for that project for any sort of funds. And in the letter, as Executive Director, Clipfel stated, "The Park District would be responsible for any of the local fund matching for the project if we were successful in getting the grant."
Okay.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion to second to approve, any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab? Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Sorry about the delay there, we had some...
He wanted to learn all about the pipeline anyway, right?
We had stuff.
Next is Commissioner Munson with Missouri Valley Complex Zoning Amendment from PUD to Public.
So in your packet, I have some information that was put together by Swenson and Hagan in the process that we've been going through, looking at changing the Missouri Valley Fairground from a PUD to a public zone. Some of the items that we found is there's, there's a chunk of land out there owned by the city, there's a chunk of land owned by the state, and then we also have the Detention Center. So what would happen is if we get this moved to a P public zone, and these other entities do not come with, then they would still be in that PUD. So the concern that they, they voiced was if the Detention Center wanted to add a pod, they would have to go through the months-long, if not a year-long process to get the PUD amended. If they're a P, it's a simple building permit request and things are done. Which is one of the biggest reasons we're looking at changing this to P public in the first place, is we don't have to go back to the city every time we want to build a shed or put a bathroom up or whatever. And so the request was for Burley County to sign off and then to request the authority for the Burley County Detention Center to also sign off so that it's all part of a public group. And I, as I've looked into it, Burley County Commission is the one that has the authority to sign off for the Detention Center.
I know he's out of the room right now.
I asked the sheriff earlier and...
Yeah, I, I just get him on the record, I would like to...
Yep.
So when he returns, I'd like to get his input on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Woodcox.
After these maps that are on there, there's a, says Unified Development Application from City of Bismarck, but on the right side page, it says Property Owner State of North Dakota. What do they own?
So they own... This little chunk of waterway.
That's it.
Yep, that's what they own.
Okay.
So the state would sign off on a little waterway, the city would sign off on their lift station. So the smallest spot is the lift station, obviously the map with the right, with the little waterway. They've all agreed to sign off on it already.
If I remember correctly, the state...
I don't see this having a problem.
Yeah, the state side of that is more of a function of an easement or a wet land end.
Yep, yep.
Sheriff Lieben?
He's out of the...
He's upstairs controlling the...
Can somebody grab him real quick if, oh, there he is.
All right. Sheriff Lieben, please.
Don't sit down, come on up.
Come on up.
No, there was just a little bit of a question regarding the Detention Center and this PUD to P public. Didn't you have an issue or...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I had talked with Commissioner Munson on this last week sometime, and basically, you know, really, we don't have a, I guess I wouldn't have a strong opinion after listening to Commissioner Munson. It makes sense to include us in this. I looked at the joint powers agreement with jail and our operating committee, I don't see any issues... I don't see any issues there where we would have to take it before both Commissions. So I, after listening to Commissioner's Mun, or Commissioner Munson's explanation, it makes sense to me.
Okay. That, that was the question, so.
Okay.
And Mike, it's certain, the JPA, as long as we're clear of that with the, with the Detention Center.
Yep. Yes.
Seems to be fine.
Okay. So I would move to approve the support of signing the, um, Unified Development Application to move to P public.
Second.
Yeah, a motion second, any further discussion? Is that why you're here? Okay. No input?
He was hiding here, I thought I had to explain it all.
See, you could have got all of that.
I could have got all, all of that.
I knew that, but I just let you roll on, you know?
Hiding is my best spot over there. Uh, yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bittner. And, uh, Chairman Munson, or, excuse me, Commissioner Munson, I spoke with, uh, earlier about this as well. Just to let you know, this is not uncommon for the city to request this when zoning map is coming in and there's properties adjacent to it that are, that are under the same beauty or even the same zoning, uh, rather than having kind of this odd spot that is P, then we must bring everybody into this, into the fold as well. Uh, we just had some concerns on it because as well, the Missouri Valley Complex, even though you guys are one entity as Burley County, and the Missouri, the Detention Center, there's kind of their own separate piece. So we wanted to make sure everybody is aware that we, we'd be bringing everybody into this P public zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate your patience. Okay, any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries. County Engineer Hall, proposed project priority list and award of bids for motor graders. Welcome, Marcus.
Good evening, Commissioners, I got two items on the agenda. The first is the approval of the 2025, uh, Burley County Construction Program, basically. This is generally something I bring to the County Board in January. Uh, but since the board currently sitting is going to be the same board that's going to be sitting in January, I thought we could maybe move and get a jump on this, get ahead of some of the DOT lettings and maybe get some better prices for some of our, uh, construction projects. Uh, I have included a list of the projects, uh, for the 2025 program in your packet. I've also given you a, a copy, a little bit bigger print there, so a little bit easier to see. Um, I just want to point out a couple items on it and then be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, in, in this particular program, we do have chip seals, uh, projects, both unorganized, organized townships, and the county chip seal projects that we have. In addition to that, I wanted to point out Brian Slough is a project that we're have, uh, we're gonna be doing, the American Rescue, use the American Rescue Plan money. Uh, this is basically, uh, uh, be a dry pipe from that particular slough, uh, to the river. Um, and then we'll install a pump when we need it, if we ever need it. We'll have, we have pumps onsite that we can use for most of that work. In addition to that, uh, through the budget process, we added some projects using, uh, the Prairie Dog money, uh, that we will be receiving this next year. I did just check on that, uh, particular layout of where the money was at and stuff. I believe if everything keeps moving forward and the receipts keep coming in, as they've been coming in, probably sometime the end of February, the first part of March, uh, they're gonna fill that bucket, uh, that is required for the county to get the money. So I believe this will take place and we will be able to get that money. Projects that we included, um, were a micro surf, surface project on a couple of different roadways, uh, Seventy-first Centennial and then Sixty-six. Uh, the Mill and Overlay Project on Highway Ten. This is basically from where we left off, all the way over to Eighty-three Sterling, finishing up that particular project. And then a chip seal for the whole thing, all the way from Sixty-six, uh, over to Eighty-three, to cover that work that we've done in the last, last year and what we will be doing next year. In addition to that, uh, through the process that we were putting things together, uh, we, we, um, through the development, um, department and stuff like that, we've learned that there's going to be, possibly going to be, a, uh, gas station put in on the corner of Highway Ten and Eightieth, that's moving through the process. Um, and so one of the things that we required from that developer was to provide us with a traffic analysis of that particular intersection, uh, because we wanted to know if that increase in traffic at that location was going to cause us any problem. One thing we learned about that is that we already have a problem at that location. And so, uh, we, we talked to Commissioner Schwab and Commissioner Bittner about adding a project to take care of some of our problems that we currently have at that intersection, even before the develop moves in place. Uh, those changes that we're gonna be are basically turn lanes is what we're gonna be adding at that location. It's not gonna be a roundabout or anything like that at that location, just some turn lanes and, and improvements of the intersection. We were able to fit that in because of some of the savings we're thinking we're gonna have on some of those other Prairie Dog projects. So at the end of the day, we're not spending any more money than what we had planned of spending of Prairie Dog money through the budgeting process. It's the same amount of dollars, so it's just adding that particular project. So, uh, there's a proposed resolution in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but I do recommend approval of that resolution.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Bakken?
Uh, as far as contingencies, uh, of getting through this list for the next year is, is, where does the funding number come in and, um, because these are priorities in order? So eleven would drop off, then ten would drop off if there's a hiccup in funding?
Actually, Commissioners, um, um, when I use the word priorities, that's kind of a misnomer. This is our construction program for next year. So a hundred percent of this was already included in the funding that we put together for the budget, budgeting for next year. So, um, if at some point we see that, oh, this project's coming in way over, then we're gonna have to make adjustments at that time, so.
And that'll be on the fly, that was, that was my question.
Yep, that's how we'll deal with that.
Move to approve?
Second. Oh.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Commissioner Schwab?
Do you have those turn lanes down by Highway Ten on Bittner Road?
What did you call that road? Bittner Road?
I guess since we own the land on the north and we own the land on the south. I forgot what the road is.
Eightieth Street.
Eightieth, yes.
Eightieth Street. And that's not Bittner.
Yes, that's in here. Yep, at Highway Ten and Eightieth, and that's at the same location.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you just
Any approaches for Schwab Bridge?
Let me tell you a little story about why I would support turn lanes at that location. So one night, I'm coming home, actually from one of these meetings, from a commission meeting, and I'm driving down the road, and I go to take a right turn, and there's a guy behind me, and I'm gonna be a nice guy and turn, move over to the side to kind of let him go by and, and whatever. So I, I cross that fog line or whatever it is, you know, to give him some room, like you would if there was a turning lane.
North Dakota church rules.
Yeah, and I, and I turn south, vroom, there's Burley County Sheriff's Department pulling me over because I was trying to give the other guy some room. So the turn lanes is probably a good idea right there.
Did you pay the ticket?
I didn't get a ticket. They, they looked, took one look at me and said, well, you got enough problems. Go ahead, sorry about that.
Another thing, it does not include that bridge we're gonna talk about later on.
Right, we, I talked about that with Marcus, um, ahead of the meeting, and we'll, we'll come back to that at some point here, just not.
Other funding.
Um, any other? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
The next thing I have on the agenda is approval of, uh, the low bids on two motor graders. On October seventh, the County Board authorized the County Auditor and the County Engineer to advertise for bids for two motor graders under our, our typical five-year total cost bid guarantee rebuy, repurchase, uh, program. Um, we did open bids on November fourth. Uh, the bids are listed in your packet and I show you there. RDO Equipment had the total bid low, uh, the low total bid, um, cost for this particular, these particular items. As you can see, the bids came in very close, a very good number as far as I'm concerned. Uh, they are higher than last year by about fifteen thousand. However, uh, we've done some changes. We actually went up to a, a model higher, um, this year than we did last year. Part of that reason was, uh, to, it's a little heavier, a little more power, and, and we hope to be doing a little bit more, a little better on the blading operations, it cuts a little better. And then also for snow removal operations, uh, we felt the, the higher, a little more horsepower was a better way to go. So there is a proposed resolution in your packet. I do recommend approval, I'd happy to answer any questions.
Move to approve? Second. Motion second to approve, any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Sheriff Leibin? Handgun replacement project and Back the Blue Grant Program update. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. The first item, the handgun replacement project, uh, basically what's going on, and we did budget for this for year 2025 in the, um, asset forfeiture line item. And basically, our pistols, our handguns are really the only weapon that we replace on a life cycle. Basically, when you look at like our shotguns and our rifles, uh, they don't, they get minimal usage, minimal wear and tear in comparison to the handguns. So the handguns historically have been on a life cycle rotation of about seven to nine years, somewhere in there. Uh, we are coming up on eight years here with these handguns. And so basically, uh, when we looked at this, the cheapest way or the best way to do it was, we felt would be asset forfeiture, um, which is not money that's levied through the property tax. This is money that's awarded back to our department, um, through seized assets from criminal activity. And so basically, uh, even though we started, or we planned this in 2025, we had to start making the purchases. Um, now, as we're gonna get into late twenty-four here, then twenty-five, we will need to start paying some invoices. Because we're using asset forfeiture dollars, that does have to be approved by the commission because of the dollar amount according to our asset forfeiture policy. Um, so I have signed off on it. The Finance Director, Lee Jacobs, has signed off on it. And State's Attorney Julie Lawyer have all signed off on it in accordance with our policy. Um, basically, um, what we look at is with the handguns, uh, we do resale those. Uh, they are marked with the Sheriff's Department insignia and logo on there. Historically, we've offered them to our deputies, that's the plan. We're doing again this time at a fair market value. The, uh, the magazines have value, the holsters have no value. In the past, we've had to sell those, um, when we've had old host, holsters, we've had to sell them over at, um, like the auction in Mandan, I forget what, Twin City Auction, wherever we can get rid of them, because there's really not a market for that. So basically, we're using the same process we've used historically since I've been a part of this. The only difference this year, we are changing, uh, models. Uh, we're staying with Sig Sauer, um, going with the P three twenty, uh, which is a more versatile handgun. They had some problems in the past, they've worked that out. And, uh, and this will be the first time we are implementing optics on our handguns. So basically, what I'm here before you is authorization, um, to proceed with the asset forfeiture purchase.
So move. Second. Yeah, motion of second and a third, I think there's
You probably want out of here.
Any further discussion, seeing none, call the roll.
Actually, yes. So have you ever, uh, looked at some of the state auctions or game and fish when they do their, their confiscation with their, their poaching program? Uh, some of those are rather robust auctions. Um, a lot of people out there in the sportsman world may be interested in some of those assets that, uh, uh, could fetch a better price.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, and we have tried about everything. Um, not necessarily the wrap auction or anything like that. The problem with a lot of that, like the holsters, is it's pretty beat up by the time we are done with it. So it's outlived its usefulness. But we, we do everything we can to try and get the most money for the stuff, so.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries. Next.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, the next item is the, uh, Back the Blue Grant Update. If you remember, I came before you in, I believe it was November of twenty-three. Um, basically, there was a bill in the North Dakota Legislature, uh, that authorized the state to give money to political subdivisions in an effort to, um, retain and recruit law enforcement and correctional staff. Uh, basically, when I came before you, um, we had looked at taking our money and using it mainly for retention bonuses, um, but new hires would have to stay so long and then get that bonus. Um, so with the amount of mon, we were awarded a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars. Um, not counting me, because like I've stated, I'm an elected official. I don't think a recruitment and retention bonus applies to me. Um, but basically, I had asked for permission for twenty-six hundred and ninety-seven dollars of unused salary, um, just to round it up to an even thirteen hundred dollars for the employees that had been with us one year. And some of the hires that had been, I think the, the lowest is nine months. And we had graduated, um, or decreasing amounts. But basically, I had told you back then, if we had four turnovers, we would not need that money from the county. Um, so I'm not gonna ask for that money, we don't need it. Now, we have had about twenty turnover in, um, the year since this program was in effect. Um, I will come back at a later point and give you a complete report on the program, the success, what we've learned from it, because I, I think I stated before, and I would state tonight, that this program didn't work, in my opinion. But what it did teach us is what does work, and I think that's recruiting bonuses for our future or for our employees, um, if we're ever gonna look at anything. And, but I'll give you a more thorough report, because what we've found in the last year is our employees get us good employees. And so if we're gonna look at rewarding anything, maybe that's something down the road the county can look at. But like I said, I'll brief that at a later time. So my request tonight is, um, I did contact the AG's office that is overseeing this program. I asked them, um, what they expected of us with this unused money. Um, they said, adjust your program to use the money. Um, so I did speak with HR Director Binder, uh, basically coming before the commission tonight, just requesting authorization to be able to work with HR on this. Um, kind of use our same system we set it up with, but what it would do is it would increase those mounts a, a little bit for everybody, um, basically in an effort to use that money and not return it to the state as directed by the AG's office.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second to approve, any further discussion? Call the roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Chairman Bittner?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. County Auditor Treasurer Sponskowski, Executive Meeting Minutes Discussion. Welcome.
Okay, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, uh, I know that was part of the discussion at the last meeting as far as the, uh, process for the approval of executive session minutes. And so I kind of wanted to go over my current understanding of it, and I've talked to other municipalities and to see how they do it as well. Uh, I believe that we do it relatively consistently with what other municipalities do. However, that being said, I would definitely like to get the State's Attorney's opinion on this and, uh, that we can see how we want to, uh, do it moving forward. Uh, so if you see here, we've had two executive sessions within, uh, this year. One was on July fifteenth, and then the other one was on, uh, August nineteenth. And so it, I included the minutes in the packet here and highlighted where that is covered. Uh, to my understanding, the executive session, uh, I, I almost don't want to call them minutes, more like notes, uh, is required by a sentry code that the meeting be, uh, audio recorded. Uh, and then the minutes are, they're, it, it depends on how you think about it. Typically speaking, minutes of meetings are to be published and reviewed by the public in, uh, the newspaper. Uh, executive session minutes are not held to the same rules because they're closed meetings. They're not open to the public. And so to my understanding of it, that is to be covered in the minutes of the next meeting. Such, the, the, very similar to the way that we have it covered in these approved minutes. Uh, so, uh, if you, you just want to get some feedback here or from State's Attorney Lawyer, how she would prefer it to be done? If, if we don't currently do it the same way, like I said, I've talked to, uh, namely the City of Bismarck, and they do it relatively, almost the exact same way that we do it currently. Uh, so it's, yeah.
So in looking at the statute governing minutes of an open meeting during which an executive session is held, which is forty-four dash oh-four dash nineteen point two subsection four, it says that the minutes that have to be included are in the open meeting, um, And that would include the names of the members attending the executive session, the date and time of the executive session was called to order and adjourned, a summary of the general topics that were discussed, kind of like what we would put in an agenda to announce an executive session. And then, so it's a summary of the general topics discussed or considered that does not disclose any closed or confidential information and the legal authority for holding the executive session. And then any decision that was made during the open meeting would be part of those minutes. But the actual contents or minutes of the executive session aren't recorded or reported because we have that recording of the actual meeting that has to be retained for a minimum of six months.
Okay.
So hopefully that makes sense.
That's what we've been doing.
Great.
Mm-hmm, correct.
I just wanted to make sure we were doing it correctly. I was questioned on it, so I wanted to have this clarification, so.
So if the. So no action required?
No.
Yeah, the only thing that I would suggest that we put in there is the same thing we put on the agenda, which is the statutory authorization for executive session. That should also be included in the minutes. That's the only thing I don't see.
Okay, so.
That it was called to executive session pursuant to NDCC, whatever.
We've read that often.
Correct, and that's in the agenda. So just copying that over to the minutes would be the only thing I would suggest.
Perfect.
Otherwise, they're good.
Julie, who's, if a case arises, who has access to those minutes? Because they're not open to the public.
Correct.
So if something arises, is it usually the AG's office? Or who sifts through that?
So if somebody wants to challenge the fact that we went into executive session or what was discussed during the executive session, they could make a complaint or a request of the Attorney General's Office to review that. That recording goes to the Attorney General's Office. The Attorney General is also not authorized to disclose the contents of that executive session, but can review that to ensure that we were following the law when we did go into executive session, that we only discussed what was necessary to do that executive session. And so it's just the Attorney General's Office.
And we're not allowed to discuss anything outside of what that executive session was called for. So I just want.
Correct.
The public to be aware of that from a transparency perspective. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. No further action needed on that.
Julie, I have a question. At this meeting here, who's taking the minutes?
Well, this meeting's being recorded too. And it does say in the statute that the auditor is responsible for recording the actions of the county commission, but it doesn't say how or when that needs to be done. So since we do have a recording that somebody can look back on, it beats paying somebody overtime to sit here and take minutes when they're probably going to watch the recording anyway to make sure they got them right.
And also.
The reason I'm asking is because the weed board has to have somebody there. So I figured, well, maybe this.
Well, so when we're meeting as the weed board, it's recorded.
Yeah, and technically, we are supposed to have somebody there bringing up the minutes.
Well, it doesn't say in statute that somebody has to be there recording the minutes. It just says that the business of the board has to be recorded by minutes. You know what I'm saying? And so, yes, yes, I believe we are. Let me show you.
And just for the commission's information, what I'm doing back here, I'm not just drawing smiley faces. I'm actually taking notes right here of who made the motion, who seconded the motion, and who voted for the motion. So if you want to see what I'm writing down here, I'm taking a form of minutes as we go. Obviously, we expand upon that later.
Julie, I'm not a lawyer and I don't argue with you.
No, that's okay. No, it does say, under the duties of the county auditor, because there's nothing specific about the taking of minutes during a meeting in the Sentry Code. But the, under the duties of county auditor, the number one is act as clerk of the Board of County Commissioners and keep an accurate record of the official proceedings of the board. And that's under Sentry Code 11-13-02, and that's subsection one. So it doesn't say that they have to attend the meeting and take the minutes at the meeting or that they can't supplement them later by listening to an audio recording. I don't know how it was done in the past before it was broadcast over TV and recorded that way. I think they probably recorded the meeting for themselves anyway so that they could go back and review that when they were writing the minutes, but.
Well, I often wondered, you know, as I was talking about this, what happens if the recorder doesn't work?
Well, that's why they take note, or that's why you're taking notes as we're going.
I'm taking notes of the bare minimum necessary things right now.
Okay. What if the pipeline's breaking?
We're all dead. Okay. No other action needed on that. Under Other Business, move into, the first thing I had on there was email from a John. Frazee, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Sorry if I'm not. F-R-A-A-S-E concerning municipal courthouse, or municipal courtroom over in the court building. And he had a request if we would consider allowing that the city rename that room to reflect the years of service of the judge that was presiding there for a number, for however many years. I think he said 42-plus years. And he wanted to know what was the process for working on this. So what I did is I asked Kevin Quinn real quick, what do the courtrooms in that building go by? And so basically, every one of those courtrooms has a number. You know, like it's, Julie probably knows this better than I do, but like courtroom 10100 or something. And so Kevin took a picture of the sign above that room. And it's, I think it was room 103, which I think we have to have no matter what, because there's a building directory usually associated with that. And anybody wants to walk up to the directory and go, what room are we going to? And then it's Municipal Court. And so then, I talked to Kevin a little bit ahead of the meeting. And the way it sounds is that, you know, when there's a rumor floating around that once we move out of this building, the Municipal Court may move into this building anyway. So it sounds like it might not be, might not be an issue regardless. So I just thought I'd bring it to the attention of the commission and ask if you want to do anything with that email. Commissioner Bakken.
Is there a, I'm guessing there's probably a timeframe that some process would like that would take. But if we're moving anyway, then, you know, how does that align with? That would be a city's decision at that point, wouldn't it?
Yeah, if they're moving the Municipal Court in here, they could name this place, or not maybe this room, but.
Whatever room.
Whatever room they're in, rename that, whatever they want. I think they'd be able to meet their goal in there.
So my question is, on the email, is it tied to the years of service by that municipal judge in that courtroom versus naming a courtroom for the municipal judge?
Well, I'll just read it. It's pretty short. "I am interested in working with you to rename the Municipal Court courtroom after the recently retired Judge William Severin, who was judge for the city of Bismarck for 42-plus years. What is the process for working on this? City Administrator Jason Tamanic told me to contact you to inquire about the process since Burley County owns the building." I don't know if this person that's asking is a city employee even, or I don't have any idea, but.
My only question would be about intent. Is it because he was tied to that courtroom or is it just?
No, it looks to me like it's because he was a judge for the city of Bismarck for 42-plus years.
Right, so.
Probably like those plaques on the wall over there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wood.
Municipal Court used to be here years and years ago, but it did move over there for a long, at least 30 years, as far as I know, it's been that. And he did do a great job, and he was a municipal judge forever. And he was dedicated to that room. And they, when we remodeled, they did a lot of things that he requested and wanted to put into there. And it turned out very good. But the intent is great, whether we, the kickers, whether they're going to move over here.
Yeah.
Are we ruining the intent of the nomination? I would certainly favor moving, naming it for him if we do any of, we haven't done any of the rooms out that we've got, I don't think.
So would Julie have any insight on?
Yeah, I was going to just chime in and say, maybe you want to invite him here to see what his intent is, because I mean, that's not unheard of. I just pulled up the news article from the Supreme Court website where December of 2020, they dedicated basically courtroom 305 in Morton County to Judge Thomas Schneider, who was a judge in our district for 38 years. And that was the courtroom that was right outside of his chambers. And so that was the preferred courtroom that he was in and the one he was mainly in. So I assume what they want to do is name the courtroom that he practiced in or was a judge in for all that time as his courtroom or dedicated to him and his years of service. I would assume if they do vacate that portion of the building, we'll still use that as a courtroom because it's already set up as a nice courtroom, so. I mean, you might want to just invite him in to find out what he wants to do.
Name a courtroom in this building after him just as easily.
I would like to proceed and throw it back to him, see what their intent is.
Well, that'd be a question for the city administrator if their intent is to move over to here.
Would that affect our decision?
Yeah.
Just like Schwab Bridge, Schwab Number One. We haven't done that before.
I wonder if Terry Mason got a door.
I would like to proceed on it. I mean, we don't want to throw it in the wind, I don't think. Proceed on it, find out what their intent is.
I'd be interested in hearing.
Yeah, I would be interested in intent if they were invited.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out some way to respond to that email then. I'll give them an invitation.
We've never done it before, but we're open to the option, maybe, or something like that.
If I may, I would just suggest you send it back saying we can put it on as an item for our agenda for the next meeting if he cares to come in and speak about it. And then he can let you know if he wants to pursue it, if you're interested.
Good idea.
And then just have him confirm that with the auditor if he is interested, if that's something you're willing to do.
Contacting who, county auditor, yeah. And make a presentation to the commission, how's that? Perfect. Okay, so what I'm saying is you can place that item on a future commission meeting agenda by contacting the county auditor and make a presentation to the commission. Anything you want to add? No, sounds good. Send. Okay, we're done with that one. Next one, boiler for the courthouse. Late last week, I got a call that we have a crisis that with cold weather coming up, we have a boiler that broke down and we don't have the availability of parts for that. And they won't, they're not willing to part in something that's also, you know, like an aftermarket thing or anything because of safety concerns. We budgeted for and planned for boiler replacement for next year already. We identified the funding sources already. And the only question is whether or not, which is kind of a moot point, whether we should just move ahead with the necessary repairs to upgrade now or not. And I don't know if Kevin's still here, but I don't think the option is, Kevin, you want to come on up? I don't think the option is to wait, because we know that the system that's there is inadequate. It doesn't keep up during the winter anyway, right?
And time is money.
Yeah, time is money. And so what we've already done, this is not really a decision required, but what we've already done is told them that we want to put our name on these replacement machines to add in there. Now, it's not going to be the boiler that we really want in the overhaul. That's where the catch is. Because to get the boilers that you want, now, and correct me, but to get the boilers that we want, we won't be able to do something until February, like that particular size. So what you do is you put in a couple of these smaller ones, I think three, with a possibility of adding a fourth in case it's not adequate, because there's a sizing issue with these things. But we can move ahead now so that we have heat in the building now or soon. Or we could go ahead and wait until February to where we order the, you know, because of the holiday season, they're just basically not making boilers right now.
And just bigger boilers like that take eight weeks to 16 weeks to get them purged, let alone with the holidays involved here too.
Right.
So what we're doing now is basically we're looking at a Band-Aid to get us by through the cold spell. And then we'll reuse what we put in to supplement the rest of the new stuff next year.
Right. So the goal is to get the work going on and then use that so it won't go to waste having done it. It will become part of the actual project with the remaining parts of the project. Now, cost-wise, he was estimating 155,000 plus electrical and some mechanical work and stuff on the roof, which would probably end up bringing the total at this point to like 165,000 to 185,000 for this part of it. That's not written in stone, but we have good confidence in those numbers. And the overall project, I think we were looking at 1. something, 1.5 million to begin with. So, you know, what we would probably end up doing is authorizing this to move ahead and then do a budget amendment to recognize this. And since we already identified where the money's coming from on the project, we'd just make transfers as determined by the Finance Director. He was telling me what we could do with it, so. Commissioner Woodcox.
Don't we have a jail maintenance or a car loss maintenance fund? Is there anything available there for this year?
Not enough to cover this.
There isn't.
Yeah, I reviewed that already as well.
Okay.
I mean, we could probably come up with 30, 40,000, but not 180,000. And then that's dipping into, we haven't got snow yet, so I'm looking at some of the snow outside stuff.
We're not going to get snow.
We're tapping into that yet, no. You guarantee that.
Right, so.
Another, second question. Are these, can we, these three or four units we're going to put in in the meantime? Are we, can we do, what can we do with those after that time?
They're going to stay.
Oh, okay, okay, that makes me feel better.
We'll have the other ones that we need to finish off.
Okay, so this will be part of the new project.
Yeah, we covered that, because there wouldn't be any point. I mean, we could do some sort of temporary measures if we weren't going to be able to reuse them. But this is, we're able to reuse them. Commissioner Bakken?
So I, I'm not sure if recouping is the right terminology, but what does that take off of the project cost that was slated for next year then? If we're going ahead with this piece right now?
It should mostly take that 150 to 170 off of there.
Okay.
But there will be some stuff that has to be.
So we'll be able to realize most of that cost?
We will be reused.
We'll get the cost of that back, okay?
The goal, of course, is to maximize the reusability.
Okay.
I'd move to approve. Will you move forward?
Second.
Motion, second to move forward. Any further discussion? See, none called roll. Thanks, Kevin.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries. I had one additional item, and it's not really something that, it doesn't take any action. This is, we've been presented with an Apple Creek ordinance concerning commercial vehicles.
Proposed.
Proposed. And I don't know if Marcus wants to comment on it at all or if Julie wants to comment. I know she hadn't had much of a chance because I forwarded that to her, but.
No, but I did send a response before I came over here, so you should have something in your email. And I can let you know what that is. Basically, we had received a copy of a proposed ordinance regarding, I believe it was overweight vehicles on, was it Apple Creek Township roads? And they had wanted, right, and they had wanted to do an ordinance regulating that. There is nothing that I can find in statutory authority that allows a township board to adopt ordinances. So there are things in Sentry Code already that deal with allowing permits on township roads and allowing fines on township roads for overweight vehicles, but nothing that allows the township themselves to pass an ordinance related to that.
Who enforces that? Because the township doesn't have their own law enforcement.
No, and so anyone, I'm not sure if Kelly wants to talk about this. No, and so anyone, I'm not sure if Kelly wants to talk about this. I don't know if the deputies do. I know sometimes we have received overweight truck complaints from the Bismarck PD. They have the, not as familiar with them, but they have what, the movable weights or scales or whatever that they use, that they can weigh trucks on city streets, and then if they are overweight, we get those. Very rarely do we see that, but usually it's the highway patrol that's handling that. But I'm not sure if the sheriff's department has those, those scales that they do that, but it would be the sheriff's department who would have the authority, or the highway patrol.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Munson?
In reading the, the ordinance that were the proposed change that we received from Marcus today, it says all commercial vehicles, not just overweight. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the way I read it, yeah. And then, well, that's a problem for me, because I live in that township, and I own commercial vehicles, and somehow or another, I got to get home.
Well, it does say, it does say that it's for deliveries, okay, so it can deliver you home and it'll deliver you back out.
Or
That's not what it, that's not what it says.
Or what
You have to go with the plain language, and that's not what it says.
Or their chair could make a one-off, one-time
Permit.
Mike, wait a minute, that sounds
Right. Well, first, first question I has, what about if you wanted to get concrete delivered to work on your driveway, or to, or, or get a living room couch delivered, or something like that? Anyway, it's, it's not up to me whether they want to move forward or not. The issue was, because this Burley County State's attorney can provide advice to township government, and so that was really the goal, was to kind of get an idea of what, for our purposes, whether that's something that meets the law or not. And I, I would have preferred that they had contacted State's attorney on that, but it's up to them. They are their own government and outside of our jurisdiction.
Did Marcus have anything to add on that? Because I, I can't imagine that there's not
He says no.
Some funding pieces that come into play with that, that makes it a little gray?
Yeah, he says no.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus.
Any other, okay, I think unless anybody knows something that I overlooked
Yes, I've got one more.
Okay.
Application for the water board.
Yep, 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 you did say that. And I believe I put it on there, I just
Auditor has the applications. I asked to be put on the, the last agenda, and it didn't get done, so we got it on this one, so.
Strike three. Thank you.
Okay, so I have been working on updating the current dates for the, or the, updating the auxiliary board members and the dates of, of expiration of their terms. And so, it looks like there, there's going to be one open position for the Water Resource District. As soon as I get that fully updated, I'll, I'll get that out to Mary. So we have a few. I went ahead and added all the auxiliary board applications. This is everything that I have currently received. I have the originals in my office. And so I just wanted to give you everything that I've got so far for your consideration. Also, it, we talked about this last year as well, with the wishes of the board, do you want me to present to you all the applications or that I receive at every single meeting until we get every, every position filled?
No.
Or do you want me to just keep getting them and then present them all to you in one, at one shot?
My personal opinion on that is, is that I don't want to consider individual applications at every meeting. I think we'll, we'll run towards right where the end of their term is. And then, and then we'll take those applications and apply them to the individual things, because we could, you know, we, we could have a candidate that may or may not be even in the running at the time when, when that board appointment expires.
So we have two more county commission meetings before these, these terms expire. Do you wish me to bring it before the next meeting, or at the last meeting of December?
I, I think the last meeting is September.
I think the last is
Because their term doesn't expire until the end of the, end of the year, and that'll give anybody that's already there the chance to apply. You know, unless there was a vacancy that we're, that we're filling.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wood
The one Roger Smith, he is already on the board, and he wants to re-up, and he does a great job, so we can act on that one if you want tonight, or you can put it back to the next time.
I, I'd just soon keep it all in one, and if, if he's already on there, I think I know how that
Yeah.
We thank everybody that has been applying, and, and we just want to repeat that board appointments are coming up, and we're looking for additional applicants. Anything else for the good of Burley County?
Yes.
Commissioner
Schwab Bridge.
Schwab Bridge.
Schwab Bridge, number one.
Schwab Bridge, all right. Yeah. When's the sign go up? Hey, hey, when are you going to get the sign put up?
Talk to Munson.
Are you going to get the sign for my road put up?
I can hear that next week.
Well, this bridge, to be honest with you, I watched it again this fall, and they are going, the same truck, same markings, loaded and unloaded, semi, and I believe it's ten ton. That bridge is in tough shape. And I'm not, it's my job, safety, we've got to fix it. We cannot wait around and wait around for the state. They keep moving back, replacing this bridge, and, or else close the damn road, because what's life worth?
Okay.
So I asked Marcus to kind of throw together a little something on what it all entails.
Commissioners, I'll, yeah, just bring you up to speed a little bit on it, and be kind of quick about it. I totally share Commissioner Schwab's feeling of this particular bridge. It is a bad bridge. A few years back, we applied for additional federal funds to replace this bridge. We did get it in the package, and it is in the queue to be funded under the state program. It was originally intended to be done in 2025, this next year, basically. However, because they've seen such a dramatic increase, inflation for construction of things have gone up so much, many bridges in the state had to be slid. This particular bridge was slid until 2026. So we're going to be delayed another year on this, construction of this. When this did, we did, we did receive this information. I did authorize a consultant inspector that had done the original inspection of this bridge to do another inspection of this bridge, just to, to let us know if they've seen any additional degradation of it, and anything that we needed to know immediately about that particular bridge to close it. At that point, there was no changes in the bridge. Now, that doesn't mean it's a good bridge, it's still a bad bridge. It's just that it wasn't deteriorating at an increased rate or anything like that. So it is something we need to keep in mind that move forward with. Commissioner Schwab and I talked about other funding sources and different things that we could maybe consider. There's some ramifications, and it does get kind of complicated, so I'd like to sit down a little more detailed with Commissioner Schwab on what those ramifications are and stuff like that, long-term for us. And then possibly present something a little more detailed at the next meeting, as far as recommendations on how to proceed, so.
Okay. Is that acceptable to you, Commissioner Schwab?
Well, the one thing I want to explain is what is happening to that bridge is deterioration of the steel underneath where the water is hitting, where the ice is hitting the bridge, plus it's got a wood deck, of all things. So it's, it's, it's just a tragedy waiting to happen, and it's going to happen if we don't do something.
Can, can you consider, is there some emergency measures we could take to reinforce, or is it, I mean, or is just closing it off? Because I can understand what he's talking about.
Yeah. Commissioners, we've looked at some options, and closing it is one of the options. There is a, one, two, three, basically a three or four mile detour around that bridge. It does use some township roads, so we may have to work with the township if we decide to close it.
What about load limit?
It's already at a ten ton, it's pretty low right now. Now, that doesn't mean that the people using that bridge are actually going at ten tons. I mean, I think they are going heavier on that. And Commissioner Schwab has seen that in several situations, heavier loads going across that. So I think posting-wise, we're as low as we can go, really, with that particular structure. As far as strengthening methods and different kinds of things that we could do to the bridge, I think this particular structure, it might be, it might be a runaway train and find out, trying to strengthen it.
After thinking about that a little bit more, I think now, because once you start, you know, you break it, you bought it.
Yep.
I don't think we want to, you stick with the load limits, and anybody that's violating load limits. You know, it's the people that are not violating the load limits that could get hurt on that.
Yep.
I am concerned about that. So hopefully, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll have more information, and then we'll discuss it further. You got any idea on what the, the cost of the rough
This replacement of this bridge is going to be about one point five million dollars, so.
Ouch, that much, huh? Yeah.
State portion of that would be?
I got a dog.
Currently, under the program we're going with right now, the, we, if we wait to the 2026 timeline, there's about a million dollars we'll get as federal money. So the remainder of it will have to come local, so.
And is there a scenario where if we moved on that for public safety earlier, is there a reimbursement component of that, or is that the
Good question. Historically, there's been a program where you can construct things earlier using local funds, and then in the year that the money is available, you would be able to get that payback. In the roundabout on Highway 10 and 66, we did that exact same thing. We constructed that two years earlier than the federal money was available. And this particular program, they're saying, no, we cannot do that program.
Okay. Because some of that, I know it was to mitigate inflationary construction costs.
You bet.
So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you adjourn, I have a question for Marcus. Two, what's, what's being built east of the shop? Is that Northwest Contract's main building? Is that what that is?
No, that's a utility company. Central Power Utility Company is building a, a station there.
Substation.
It'll be some storage, some office, a little bit of office space and stuff like that.
Did they buy the land from us, or did they buy?
Nope, that was their, an individual owned that particular property.
And the second question, the Fleet Farm is being built up here right now, and going up quickly. Did we have any county money in any of that infrastructure around there, the roads and all that?
No county money in that particular area.
Okay, anything else for the good of Burley County? We are adjourned. Thank you.